Please come to order and I ask Mr. Mitnick to give us the pledge of allegiance.
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated.
Thank you, Ms. Mitnick. And Mr. Waller, we need certification of closed meeting.
Yes, and before I give the certification of the closed meeting, I'd just like to make one comment, and that is the motion that we had to go into a closed meeting, it involved discussing financials as related to specific employees of Suffolk Public Schools, which in fact is authorized under the Freedom of Information Act, a resolution of certification of the closed meeting of August 8th, 2019 pursuant to Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended.
So move.
Second.
For Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
No.
Vice Chairman Brooks-Buck?
Yes.
Chairman Barham?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to one.
Next item, approval by agenda. This is an action item.
I would like to make a motion that for the approval of the agenda with the exception that we move the action on closed meeting items up in the agenda to follow this motion, and that we move that it would include, my motion includes the suggestion that we do this for all meetings.
Second.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Brooks-Buck?
Yes.
Chairman Barham?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And under public speakers on agenda topic?
Yep.
Oh, yeah, okay. Approval of the agenda, that's an action item as well. So move.
Well, that was part of her motion.
Okay.
That was part of her motion. Now you're doing the closed meeting.
But now we're doing the closed meeting material. Oh, okay, all right. And now we'll move to the closed session items. We have personnel report, Dr. Buck.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the personnel report as presented.
I second.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brooks-Buck?
Yes.
Chairman Barham?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next item, compensation for interim superintendent?
Yes.
And appointment?
Okay.
And appointment?
And appointment. Madam Chair, I move that we appoint Dr. Latoya Harrison as the interim superintendent.
Second.
Were you doing compensation, that was part separately? Okay. Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brooks-Buck?
Yes.
Chairman Barham?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And now concerning compensation?
Madam Chair, I move that we compensate Dr. Harrison at a rate of 25 percent.
Increase?
Increase?
Of a 25 percent increase in salary during the period that she serves as interim superintendent.
Second.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brooks-Buck?
Yes.
Chairman Barham?
Yes.
Motion carried.
The next item is the... Next one is the report on stipends?
Okay. We have, we have one more.
Oh, excuse me.
We have one more.
Compensation.
We have one more for the interim superintendent. Madam Chair, I move that we include the opportunity for the interim superintendent to move back to her job for a period of one year from June, from July 1st to June 30th of 2021.
I second.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brooks-Buck?
Yes.
Chairman Barham?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Dr. Buck, we need a report on stipends.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve a request for stipends for specific substitute bus drivers. That stipend is at a rate of, I believe it's $300. It would be item, $300, it would be item six on the personnel report. We're doing these individually.
I second.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brooks-Buck?
Yes.
Chairman Barham?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the request for specific individuals to provide additional guidance at Nanton River High School. Second. The amount is at a rate of $26.40 a day, per hour, for nine hours a day.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brooks-Buck?
Yes.
Chairman Barham?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve a request for approval of stipends for specific employees to receive additional compensation for work on the IB Summer Curriculum Program Committee. And that is, on page five, I believe, is that on page five?
It's attachments.
It's attachment five, okay. At a rate of $26.40 per hour.
Second.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brooks-Buck?
Yes.
Chairman Barham?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the request for specific employees to receive additional compensation for providing instructional support at the Suffolk Back-to-School Resource Fair. And that compensation is at a rate of $50 an hour for the, $50, I'm sorry, for this event.
Second.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brooks-Buck?
Yes.
Chairman Barham?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the request for specific employees to receive
additional compensation for providing instructional support at the Suffolk Back-to-School Resource Fair. And that compensation is at a rate of $50 an hour for the, $50, I'm sorry, for this event.
Second.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brooks-Buck?
Yes.
Chairman Barham?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Madam Chair, I request that we approve stipends for specific employees of CCAP for nurse aid curriculum development and summer school presentations, and that would be at a rate of no more than $1,000 maximum stipend, $1,060.
Second.
There are two different rates in that man.
Okay, is there another rate? Okay, for the nurse aid program that I read, the director, it's no more than $1,060. For the summer school presentation, it's $424 maximum.
I second.
$424?
Yes, ma'am. That would be attachment three.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brooks-Buck?
Yes.
Chairman Barham?
Yes.
Motion carried.
For these items that we just, and we, that we just approved, could we have a point of information from Ms. Forsman? Are these items going to be paid for out of the next budget, or were these items, was their budget money encumbered in the last budget? And we had, we had this question in our closed session, but waited to ask it here of you, so we were not sure. It seems many of the items are summer school and it's already ended, so from which budget is this being paid?
Every year when we develop our budget, we have, we know what these are going to be for the next summer, so that starts July 1st, so they're all part of the budget that we put together for you and present to you beginning in February. And so all stipends, all, all pieces that are paid extra are all part of your budget. They become a, an addendum to the contract that we do with that person, and it becomes part of their salary. So those are all included in your salary lines in your budget book. We publish a paying classification plan that details out what we pay per hour for all the different kinds of positions we require, we have out there, and that book is on our portal for any staff member to see at any time.
And is the CCAP come out of a different budget?
No, CCAP is part of Suffolk Public Schools now, so it has its own budget. And so any kind of, if it's curriculum development, it will come from curriculum development. If it's summer school, it usually comes from summer school. So everything has its place that the state requires us to, to code it, so we code it to where the state tells us to code it, and then it's accounted for in your budget book that same way.
Okay, anyone else have any questions of her? Okay, thank you very much.
There is, we have one additional item, I believe we missed, so we're gonna... Madam Chair, I move to approve that we approve the stipend for the curriculum writing for the Excel Academy program. That would be attachment four for board members, and I believe it's at a rate of $26.40 per hour.
I second.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brooks-Buck?
Yes.
Chairman Barham?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Are there any public speakers on the copy?
No one has signed up to speak.
No one, okay. Then we'll move to the reports by the superintendent, Dr. Harrison.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I would like to call to the podium our Director of Secondary Leadership, Mr. Stenett Byrd, or Dr. Stenett Byrd. He's going to be sharing a good news report highlighting some of the accomplishments of Kingsfork High School and the recent recognition that they received from the Virginia Department of Education. Dr. Byrd?
Thank you. Greetings, Chair Barham, Vice Chair Brooks-Buck, members of the school board, and interim superintendent, Dr. Harrison. Congratulations, by the way. It's my pleasure today to share with you a state award that was earned by Kingsfork High School for continuous improvement. The State Board of Education recognized 235 schools for high student achievement or continuous improvement under the board's new exemplar performance school rating program. The exemplar performance school recognition program is aligned with the Board of Education's revised accreditation standards and replaces the Virginia Index of Performance Recognition Program. Our Board of Education President, Daniel Gekker, stated, "The award recognizes schools that exceed state accreditation standards and schools that are making continuous improvement in improving outcomes for students and narrowing achievement gaps." So at this time, I'd like to call forth the Kingsfork High School administrative team, if they could come to the front, and we would like to present them with the plaque for continuous improvement hereby presented to Kingsfork High School. 2019 exemplar performance school award. If we could give them a round of applause. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Byrd. We as a board are so very, very proud of this. I know Dr. Lee and your staff, you have worked diligently for this, and we know that it's not an easy task, and we appreciate all that you have done, all that you have done, and your staff. Thank you so much.
Go Bulldogs.
Oh, someone else want to say something?
I just wanted to say, go Bulldogs.
Oh, go Bulldogs. Okay, yeah, go Bulldogs. Okay, Dr. Harrison?
Thank you, and again, congratulations. We are indeed very proud of you, and we appreciate your hard work. Thank you. So I would like to, next, Madam Chair, I'd like to highlight some key events on our calendar of events for the month of August.
Dr. Harrison, could you give a little guidance where we turn in our folder for this?
Yes, it will be after the, right at the beginning. It's actually the second page in your, in your board book, right after the agenda. Thank you, Madam Chair. All right, so the first event that I wanted to highlight, and this one is actually not listed on your events calendar, but I do want to make sure that everyone is aware of the Back-to-School Resource Fair that's going to be held this Saturday at Booker T. Washington Elementary School, and that event, and we'll send out an additional calendar invite for that this Saturday, but you're welcome to join us for that. Also, the New Teacher Breakfast is going to be held on August 19th, and the time for that will be 8:00 a.m. We will, please make note of that change, it's going to be 8:00 a.m. at Kingsfork Middle School. And then New Teacher Orientation will be happening August 19th through the 21st, and then Returning Teachers Report on August 22nd, and of course, our first day of school is September 3rd. Thank you, and this concludes the reports by the superintendent.
Okay, next, we need to look at the consent agenda, look at all those items, and this is an action item.
So I would like to discuss the, the field trips that are lined up. One of the things I noticed on the band and chorus, they don't have, they don't have any financial amounts listed on them, and it also says that it's coming out of school allocations. So the, the band, the field trips and the band, and maybe even that, yeah, I think even the football scrimmage. So we've been having a discussion on allocations. Is that a correct, how it should be worded? Is it coming out of allocation so students get, the other students get less, or what?
Without having the information right in front of me, I'll kind of turn to staff to see if anyone would know that offhand. If not, I may, I'll probably have to get back to you on the funding for the, for the specific trips.
So if we could table those, I think they are far enough ahead, and I appreciate that they put them on here, far enough ahead. I would like to table those items, four, five, six, and seven.
Madam Chair, I think the appropriate course of action would be to remove those items from the consent agenda.
Okay.
Have action on the consent agenda, and then just move those items to the new business, and then they can be tabled at that point.
Thank you.
August, we cannot table it. Yeah, August 21st. That cannot be tabled.
Well, I'm pretty sure that they also had listed that it came out of school allocations.
So I don't know what the drop-down options are, but I'm going to say that I'm pretty sure that they're coming out of the athletics funds or the band funds, because the band also has their separate operating funds as well. So that's the two funds. I would say, I don't know, allocations is misleading as far as allocated funds to departments and such.
Right.
I don't think that's be confusing.
Yes.
So that's considered still an allocated item. And we're, we're having to do whatever field trip app is allowing us to use as a drop-down, and I don't know how specific it is as far, I think allocations is just the closest selection, so to speak, that they could use for where the fund is coming from. And the idea here is that it's not coming from SAO.
Don't we have, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
What's, no, I don't think we have made a motion. I have not.
You were just making a motion on the consent agenda, whether it's going to be approved or modified or whatever.
So I would like to make a motion based on what you said, tell me if I do this right, make a motion to move items four, five, six, and seven to new business, we can address it there, and then, and approve the consent agenda, items one, two, three, eight, nine, and 10. Yes, I did that right.
Basically, all of the field trips are being removed from the consent agenda.
And just move to the new business, and then we could vote on them there. I think she's looking it up to see what the possibilities are, and if it's, if we could then say the money's coming from athletics, or the money's coming from the band.
I think it does point out athletics.
Yes. We need a second on that motion. I know, we need a second.
Second.
We have a second on her motion?
Yes, Ms. Jenkins. Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brooks-Buck?
No.
Chairman Barham?
No.
Motion carried, five to seven, five to two.
Normally, may I, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Normally, let me just say this, activities for band, choruses, and all those things are usually done from that fund, they're not taken from instruction, so no one is slighted by that. The football games and scrimmages and all those things come from the funds that they generate.
And so maybe there is a drop-down, that it can be specific. We'll just address that in new business when we get there.
I did want to point out that the funding sources fell out on the August 21st football scrimmage, that it is athletics.
Okay, we can approve that.
It's like they felt built in that one box, so we'll, we'll address that on the future field trip form, but at least the 21st.
Great. We can go ahead, in, in new business, we can go ahead and pass that one. Okay, great, good, great. Thank you.
Any other comments on that? Under unfinished business, ordinance 19/20-1, adding a new section, Chapter 1, Article 7, Section 1 through 7, one entitled, "Use of Social Media Supported: Employee Rights Under First Amendment: In-School and Out-of-School Use of Social Media: Balancing of Rights, Social Media Defined, Superintendent to Develop Regulations of the Policies of the Suffolk City School Board." This is a second reading.
Madam Chair, I move that we support this policy, that we acknowledge this policy and approve it. Is there a second?
So in the discussion of this one, I, I sent to all of you, we, there is a VSBA training on, that's coming up in October, and before we would pass this as a second reading, I think it would, since this, social media and all the rights and responsibilities and so on, and understanding what we're exactly passing in this, I'd like to see us wait and attend that training to understand more fully what the social media policy is and what can be supported as recommended by the Virginia School Board Association, and it is coming up soon. So I'm asking that, I guess I'm hoping that we will, before passing this, and then would have to go back and amend it or something, that we wait and not pass it right now, so that we could all get that training and we all realize what we're, exactly what we're passing and what we're saying. That's my, so I'm hoping that we don't, we don't pass this right now as a second reading, but we wait for, for all of us to be trained in those, and it was social media, but it had other very important things regarding student rights.
Mr. Waller, I would have a question of you, since you prepared this policy for us, and if you do what you've always done, I'm sure that you looked into the details and what our legal responsibilities were.
If you look at the language of the policy, it is a very broad policy, and it allows for regulations to be developed later on, and I'm almost certain that what the VSBA is going to be talking about will be more in line with regulations than it will be with policy, because for the most part, any policy, whether it's developed by VBSA or otherwise, is going to be very broad in its scope, and that's what you have in front of you now. It's something that's very broad, simply spells out the basic general rights and responsibilities, and the details will need to be worked out at some later date.
Thank you.
I've attended a, the VSBA convention in the past, there was a workshop on the First Amendment rights of school board members, and that's exactly what they talked about, the First Amendment rights of school board members, not about our, not about the personnel that are included in this ordinance.
So, so you're saying that this ordinance, this policy, I don't know why, the policy that we're addressing here is personnel, and that the workshop coming up won't address personnel? Is that what you're saying?
It'll address school board members.
The, the one coming up?
Yes.
It's, it still seems, to me, I have concerns, but we can each just vote how, how, how we feel. I, I think it's, we have to be really careful, the rights that we might take away from our employees, and...
If I could ask a question, what was the, what's the history of this? Why, why is this coming forward to, to us?
I think that perhaps Beth Ann Bradshaw can better explain that, because she first brought it to my attention and the need for a social media policy. She's coming forward now. Madam Chair, that's...
Right, yeah.
We did the social media policy, looking at it because we are using social media, our teachers are using it, our parents are using it, so from the communications department, it's an important tool that we want to encourage, but yet we want to provide safeguards and boundaries and explanations of, you know, what should and should... safeguards and boundaries and explanations of, you know, what should and shouldn't be done by employees. So, you know, some school divisions have had policies like this for 10 years, but we're kind of a little behind, the wagon's, you know, horse is already out of the barn. We're just looking at a way to both encourage this, because that's where a majority of our parents are, but also to have some handle on what our teachers and other staff are doing in this arena by providing them some guidance.
Thank you, Ms. Bradshaw. Do we have a first and a second?
Yes, we do.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Mittnick?
No.
Board Member Riddick?
Okay. I just want to be clear with what I'm voting, because there was a bit of discussion. Are we voting to enact this or to remove this until after October?
The motion was to approve it.
Okay, yes.
Board Member Story?
No.
Vice Chair Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Chairman Barham?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving to new business, we've already done the interim superintendent. We did that on the closed meeting items, so we'll move to the second item there. You might know that we are in the process of searching for superintendent, and it is required under state code that I read the following announcement. The Suffolk City School Board will conduct interviews for the position of superintendent at an undisclosed location from August 14th, 2019 through August 28th, 2019. These interviews will be held in accordance with the Code of Virginia, section 2.2 dash 3.712, and this is an action item.
Move to approve. Second.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Mittnick?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Chairman Barham?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next item on the agenda, budget development, calendar, and school board priorities. I'll turn to Dr. Harrison for this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I'd like to call to the podium our Executive Director of Finance, Ms. Wendy Forsman, to share additional information on our budget development calendar and school board priorities. Thank you.
Good morning again. This budget development calendar is a, a basic plan of what we normally do to develop our budget for the next fiscal year. So during 2019, 2020, this would be the development of the 2020, 2021 budget. You can see here that some have specific dates, wherever we can, we put specific dates on this draft, and throughout the year, as those dates are put in place, we change this calendar. We come to the board at this time of the year to get you to look at the calendar, see if there's any changes you would like to make in the development, anything you'd like to add to the development, so that as we provide it to staff on September 3rd, that we have a complete listing of what we're going to do. Just to give you an idea, this year is a new bionim for the state, so the state is doing their benchmarking now. We won't have a governor's proposed budget until mid-December. So between now and mid-December, we really don't have numbers to work with, so it's really, at this point, just how would you like to develop, what we're going to look at, and how we're going to look at it, and the dates that we're going to use to make, have things due. So if there are any questions or anything you'd like to add?
Ms. Forsman?
Yes, sir.
Last year, we added a work session for the board to introduce items that we would like consideration, and I was wondering if that would be possible to have that work session on November 14th, board meeting, before?
If that's, I mean, that's not setting me.
We have to vote.
Doctor Harrison is going to make a motion?
Yes. I move that the board hold a work session on November 14th to discuss board items that would like to be seen in the budget.
I second.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Mittnick?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Chairman Barham?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next item, capital improvement plan, and discussion of that. I think Dr. Harrison, they, I think the clerk has furnished us with a copy on that.
Yes, and thank you.
Dr. Harrison.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next, I'd like to call to the podium our Director of Facilities, Mr. Terry Napier, to share additional information on our capital improvement plan. Thank you.
You have a colored copy in the left-hand side of your notebook.
Everybody have it?
Yes.
What you're looking at there is a copy of the current CIP that was adopted by the previous school board. It was adopted in September of last year. It was revised in November of last year. What I think we need to do at this point, generally, we come to you in September with a CIP that we present to you for your review, and you adopt it at that point. What we'd like to do this time is provide you an opportunity to have discussion before we even start making adjustments to the current CIP, so that you can have the opportunity to have whatever discussions you would like to have, and make whatever recommendations you would like to make to us to be included in this plan. I think to do that, we need to review what this plan was. Some of the board members were not on the board at that time, so we can go over these items, go over the dates if you'd like, anything that you'd like to ask about this before we start our process over the next month of revising this and bringing it back to you in September. So if you look at that, the projects that were included are listed on the left-hand column from one through 12. Across the top of that chart, are fiscal years from 2019, 20, all the way out through 2028, 29. And as you can see, those projects are listed, the estimated costs are listed across from left to right, and then from top to bottom. So you get the totals across the bottom, you get the totals across the right-hand side, and I don't think we need to go over those at this point. But I think what's important to note here is the projects that are currently in there. We need to look at that and make sure that you have the opportunity to look at that and decide if that's how you want this to look when we present it to council this go-around. The revision that took place in November, and I will just refresh your memory on that, last year, when the board adopted this at Northern Shores, there was discussion at that time of having an addition. There was discussion about 10 rooms, 20 rooms. We had a number of discussions about that. When the board adopted the CIP in September last year, I believe that addition was listed as a 10-room addition. In November, after further consideration, we came back and the board made a second recommendation that they would prefer to have a 20-classroom addition. At that point, we changed the board's CIP, but that did not get included in the city's CIP, because the transfer came too late. So that, the information that currently shows up in your adopted CIP is 20. The information that shows up in the city's is actually 10. So not that it matters, because it wasn't being funded this go-around anyway, right, but that's the discrepancy between the November revision and the September adoption of last year. So if you look at those, there's two sets of numbers. The red numbers are actually the city council's numbers that they assigned to these, and also the dates, if you look at the top. The black set of numbers, that is your numbers that we assign to each project, and the dates that we turned over to the city. And you can see there are some discrepancies between those two, both in cost and in the dates. And that's generally how this goes. This is nothing new in terms of their plan looking different than ours. But what we think is important at this time is that you know what the projects were that were in the previous CIP, have the opportunity to look at that and have whatever discussions you would like, and see if we want to go a different direction with any of this. So if we could just start at the top of that project list, capital replacements, that's the money that we use for, currently, we're actually using it for HVAC replacements. But it's there at some point in time. We're also going to use it for roof systems, stormwater drain repairs, infrastructure of various types. That's money that the city is putting in the budget for us to use for these purposes, hopefully, every year. And that's currently at 2.5 million. The hazardous material, that is a $75,000 per year allocation that we get, primarily for things like asbestos and various other hazardous materials, situations that we may run into. Those two items need to stay in there. The Northern Shore, third on that list, the Northern Shores addition, I don't know what kind of discussions you want to have about that at this point, but there have been many in the past. There was also a discussion that I will remind you of at your joint meeting with the council, where it was brought up that perhaps another avenue would be building a new school rather than having an addition. Perhaps you may want to discuss going that route as well. So there are, there are options there that you could discuss, and you could stay like you are with the addition, or you could go another direction, whatever the board pleases. The operations facility at Mount Zion, this is phase two. As you know, we are currently in phase one, and that work is going as well as expected at this point. But this addresses phase two. And as you can see, you gave a number last year of 11,860, and that may have to be revised, given the escalation at, at this point. But you requested that that begin in 1920, which is the year that we are currently in. As you can see, the city took that, moved that out to 2023, 2024. So we could have a whole lot of discussion about that if you'd like, but I'm kind of partial to this one, but.
1920?
Yeah.
No, 2019?
Last week would be good. But, yeah, that, that one creates a little bit of a bind for us in terms of moving into that new facility, because we simply can't do it until phase two is finished, all of us. Some of us are lucky, food services, print shop, textbooks, archive records, they're going to be moving into that building next summer. The remainder of the facilities department cannot go until phase two is finished. So that's a big one for us. Number five was the Excel Academy at Driver, and I will let Dr. Harrison talk about that a little bit. I believe we have a plan that we've put in place that does not include this renovation.
Certainly. So as you are aware, the Excel Academy at Driver, well, it's actually the Excel Academy is no longer going to be located in the old Driver Elementary School facility. It's being, it's going to be located in Yates Middle School, and it will utilize two classroom spaces there at John Yates Middle School. So there will be no need to utilize the old Driver facility for the Excel Academy.
So that may be one that after your discussions, we take out entirely. Number six, the College and Career Academy at Pruden. There were renovations that were planned to that facility, and you can see that was $2 million the board was recommending in 2023. The city actually placed that one ahead of your timeline, 2022. Number seven, and just keep in mind, when we talk about this CIP, it is a 10-year plan. The reality is, it's a one-year plan. It's funded once, you know, it's yearly. So anything after about year five become essentially placeholders. Anything can happen across the course of five years, and a lot of these projects may not even appear. Now, later on this afternoon, you're going to hear Mr. Heinz talk to you about a joint venture between the city and the school board regarding a facility study, some rezoning things. Once that takes place, if it takes place, and we hope it does, this could change how we, as, as far as what projects get included on this, depending on what information we get back from that. But Mr. Heinz is going to talk about that later. So seven, eight, nine, that's the replacement of JFK, Forest Glen, and John Yates Middle Schools. If you look across to the right, you can see the timeline that, that you suggested. You can also see the timeline that the city suggested last year. After that, item 10, Kilby Shores Elementary School replacement. Number 11 is a downtown elementary school. That was put in there by the board several years ago, based on some recommendations that certain people felt we needed at downtown elementary school. That's certainly open for discussion as well. And then number 12, the New Northern End High School. I've been in facilities for 12 years, and that's been number 12 on this list for 12 years. And the city will tell you, they, they have no intention at this point of even talking to you about a high school, but just in case at some point in the future we need one, that is essentially a placeholder for a current project at some current, you know, some date in the future. So this is what you currently have in place. I don't know if you'd like to discuss any of this today, or take it back and look at it again, but over the course of the next month, we need to do something to make whatever adjustments are going to be made to this, so that we can present it back to you at the September board meeting, and you can make a decision at that time whether you want to adopt it and allow Ms. Forsman to present it to the city.
So, I mean, my foremost question is, we have this proposal to work with the city that I think I'm hearing is favorable. Won't that influence this greatly? I mean, they're going to come back with a recommendation, and.
It will.
Yeah, so.
But the problem is, that's going to take place after this has to be in, so.
Has to be done.
Yeah, so I think it's going to impact future CIPs, and given this is just funded yearly, I don't think that's going to impact us a lot, because whatever shows up from that report will certainly be incorporated into this in the future. But for this year and this cycle, we need to go ahead and do whatever we want to do to the current plan as though we weren't going to have that study, and submit it to the city.
Okay, and so the one year that we're really working on is 2021. Is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, thanks.
My question is in regards to items seven, eight, and nine. Well, actually, item number eight says no new land. Is it possible that we can replace all of our middle schools without purchasing new land? John Yates have a big enough portion of land that you could utilize. John F. Kennedy has the athletic fields behind the rear and a abandoned hog farm that's behind that, that we could acquire, plus some houses to the left of the school facing directly at it that could be acquired. Purchasing land right now is expensive by itself.
It's my opinion that that would be a very difficult road to go down. I know what you're saying. It's possible that it could be done. It has been done in other places. But for us to do that at our three middle schools, I think it would be very difficult. I think finding new land, which is available, because we've looked, it's just a question of, you know, when and where. But I think as far as efficiency and getting these projects built, I think it would be much, much easier for all of us if we did it on a new site rather than trying to go behind an existing school. There simply is no room at John Yates for us to do that, to be honest. John F. Kennedy, we do have the athletic areas that you were talking about, but when you talk about acquiring properties, that can be very difficult as well. When you go down that road towards eminent domain and those kinds of things, where you're going to take people's property, it becomes even more difficult. And Mr. Waller could speak to that, if you need some information about that. But I think for us to get this done and get it done expeditiously, we need to look at moving those schools at, to a different location, and allowing the city, if we do this, to simply take over those buildings and repurpose them in whatever way they would like, once we open the new schools.
I wouldn't recommend that. And the reason why, here in Suffolk, we have a tendency to build wide, and we don't build up. Ruffner Middle School in Norfolk is, if I may stand corrected on this, I believe it's a minimum of a three-story middle school that sits in prime location, and it doesn't take up as, nearly as much land as John Yates does. So I think that could be a model for the Northern End corridor. So I think that could be a model for the Northern End corridor with the John Yates replacement. When John F. Kennedy is concerned, I mean, people are selling land all up and down that area now, so we don't know until we try. My recommendation would not be to turn any of our existing schools that we are, may not use, and especially Driver, over to the city right now because I believe there are some needs that we could repurpose them for our needs within the division. Maybe it's a possibility we could do a joint-use facility with the city where, I know there's one division, I can't recall the name of it right now. They have a, it's pretty much like the Pruden Center, but it's in the heart of the city where during the day it educates the students, but in the evening time, it educates the adults. I want us to be very, and it's not saying you're not, but I want us to, and moving forward, I want us to take advantage of what we already have versus continuing to buy new land and new land and new land. And if for some reason we had to move John F. Kennedy, that would be an ideal transportation department site is centrally located throughout the city, but that's just my recommendation. The next thing I had a question on was number five, the Excel Academy at Driver. With us no longer pursuing to move the Excel Academy there, what is slated to become of Drivers? I know we have some people wanting to get hands on it, to turn it into green space, but I think our school division could utilize it for other purposes.
And that would certainly be a CIP consideration to discuss, you know, future plans for the Driver facility. At this time, we don't have a, a plan or we're using it for storage, for a lot of the items that will eventually be moved over to Mount Zion, but there are no programs in that facility at this time.
I have a recommendation, but I will save that recommendation for a later date. I'm still doing some research and once I get that data collected, I'll send it over to you, Dr. Harrison.
Thank you.
I have a question. What is the, what is the date on Elephant's Fork Elementary School? When was that built?
1978. Same year that we built Kilby Shores and Nansman Parkway. Also referred to as the triplets. They're identical.
Kilby Shores, Elephant, and what was the other one?
Nansman Parkway.
Oh, Nansman Parkway, okay. I wish that was on here somewhere, of course, but if they were all built at the same time, then-
Look at number 10.
John F. Kennedy, Forest Glen and John Yates were also built 1964.
We can just, yeah, definitely they're much older. I see that. Well, we can just put, we can just put for number 10, triplets. Just kidding.
I have another recommendation.
Dr. Buck.
I just, I just wanted to say that we need to keep in mind that this is fluid.
Very much so, yes.
We have to move based on whatever we have. Now, my concern for John F. Kennedy in particular is that it's in a flooding area and we've had to put a whole lot of money in replacement of things because it's in an area. So I would have a problem with it staying there and building on it because it keeps flooding.
Kennedy has been prone to flooding in the past. That is true. We have put French drains in on a number of occasions. That has helped. But we still see flooding in that auditorium if we have literally a large thunderstorm. So, so that's consideration.
And the other part is that as we rebuild schools and try to keep them in the same place, since the building would take a couple of years, I'm, I'm thinking, at least a year.
Yeah, it takes about a year to design it and a couple of years to build it. So you're talking about a three-year timeframe.
About a three-year span, what do you do with the children while you're trying to put it in the same-
Well, I can tell you that other school divisions have attempted to build a new school on the same site as other schools and they were successful, but it was not easy. So you always have to separate that construction. Yeah, Mr. Heinz is pointing at himself. He did this in Alawite County. Was it easy, Mr. Heinz? And, and the problem you run into is you're mixing construction work with students and class and actually Chesapeake's doing one right now where they're building an elementary school on the site of an old elementary school. So it can be done, but it's difficult and you have to have the proper amount of land to do that because it's not just the footprint of the school that you're building. There's a laydown area that's required for these contractors that is quite large for them to even be able to get in and around the building that they're building and lay down everything that has to go in there to build that building. So you have to make sure you can accommodate that as well. So it's certainly something that could be done. We just have to look very closely if it's something that we would want to do.
Okay. My recommendation to alleviate that, let's go back in history in Suffolk. We built Mac Ben Elementary School. Before Mac Ben Junior opened as Mac Ben, the students were shifted from Booker T to Mac Ben. And then once Booker T was finished being renovated, the students returned back to Booker T that was zoned for and Mac Ben opened. Hence, we didn't lose the land at Booker T. The school was renovated, rah rah rah. We could do the same concept with the new addition at Forest Glen. Shift the students from John F. Kennedy to Forest Glen. Build up the land just as the city did with the Hilton Garden Inn. They built, that was a flood zone area as well that was actually hanging on by a trash barge that was wedged into the land. The city came in, they built up the land and they, we have the Hilton Garden Inn standing there today with no flooding issues other than the Kimberly Bridge, which is outdated by design. So there are ways we can get it done. I think my, my, my recommendation would be let's explore all possible attempts to keep the existing land we have because that ultimately it saves in the long run, I believe. And, and we can move forward with going up instead of going wide. You could increase capacity with going up, but I mean, I understand this is ideally speaking. But that's, that's my recommendation. I think we, we have enough land to, to do it. We don't have to build while the school is in session there. Start the project at one school and shift students. The last thing I had with the new, the idea of a new high school in the Northern End, is that something that we could continue to table off if we rezone? Lakeland is, is not at capacity, I believe. But I believe if we shift some students, sometimes we have to make some tough decisions that maybe our taxpayers may not agree, but it would save us in areas of transportation. It would save us in areas of safety, especially with all this stuff that's going on now. Overcrowded schools do pose a safety risk. So if we rezone, that could alleviate the problem for a while while we come up with a more permanent solution. That's just my thought.
I agree with you, Mr. Riddick.
If you remember the discussion we had with the city, I think that was one of the items that they, in the feasibility study that they talked about. They're going to look at that and that, and I think when we get that information coming forward in the future, then we'll have that to work with to help us make those very decisions.
That, that would be a part of that study. And just a reminder, you have also looked at that two years ago in 2017.
Yes, we did. We spent quite a bit of time on that.
Yes, and you opted not to do that because there were some big downsides to rezoning the high schools and, and the way students would have to be pulled from Nansman River. Now, Mr. Heinz will talk about this this afternoon again, but I think this whole rezoning piece being included, that's going to be a big plus. You know, maybe they know something we don't.
Lastly.
I have one. Would it be reasonable, I'm just looking at 2021. It seems like the Excel Academy, the three and the 2 million is off the table for now. Would it be reasonable to move the 2 million that we would like for Pruden and slide it over to 2021?
At this point, anything is reasonable because what this is doing, you're requesting money here from the city, so yes.
Just for that next year, and it seems they would like to do it quicker and since that other was off the table, I see, I guess just for this one year, I would like to see that 2 million slid over to 2021 as a proposal. And then of course, everything is up in the air when it, when it, when we actually get the study. But for now, it would seem if we slide that 2 million over, then I think what we have there, at least to be presented, would be reasonable.
Yes, and at this point, you're, you're making the request and if you don't ask, you're not going to get it, so why not?
Okay, thanks.
And the city's recommendation is that we do for Pruden 2 million in 2223.
Right, and so-
They weren't giving us any money for the Excel Academy anyway. This is just our recommendation.
Right.
Right.
Right, this is just information.
My, my last recommendation is that let's build for growth, not current needs. Building middle schools with an 800 capacity limit, as our city is continuing, look at out the window, Kings Fork was the design and they're still building new subdivisions around it. It's going to oppose, it's going to impose a huge issue later on down the road. Could we up this capacity number from 800 to at, at minimum 1,000?
We can place any number you like, but be cautioned about doing that. For the past several decades, our city and actually our neighbors as well are very reluctant to fund a building that has empty classrooms. And we all, and we agree with you. We understand that it's cheaper to build a classroom today than it's going to be in two or three years from now for kids that might be coming. The problem is you're spending taxpayers' money on rooms that are going to have nobody in them and you can't guarantee that those rooms are ever going to be needed. So that's been the argument in the past. So we have never been in a position where we've had the funding available to us to actually build for future growth, which is what you're talking about doing, even though we've made that recommendation in the past. It, it's a very tricky sell when you're talking about building classrooms and not having anybody in them.
Well, my recommendation to combat that would be is during the design phase, you design it with an expansion component. In the event that we grow and we need the lead, we already have the design, we already have the, the footprint of how we want it to grow. So if we reach a situation like Northern Shores where its capacity, we need a room, we already have a plan, we are, and, and you just do it in phases versus, for, for like a better examples, Cherry, landlocked, you can't go anywhere. I know we made best with what we had and it was a good job that the board done. However, I believe we can take that same model at Cherry Middle School and build the other schools to look like it, but have an expansion component where if population demands a new educational wing, you can do so easily. And you just will have to conform to the new construction codes versus now we need a new middle school because we outgrew this one. Our city's growing and we have to plan for it.
We, I think, I think, Mr. Riddick, we all agree with you. And as we fought for Cherry to have more than 600 because that was the, that was the recommendation from the city. We did not want that. We want it to be larger and right now it's at capacity, okay? We knew that, but trying to get the funding for that was a whole nother ballgame. We understand what you're saying and the board, the previous board supported that as well, but that was the best that we could get. So as we look at that, I understand exactly because Mr. Napier and the rest of the staff members were involved in that discussion as well and, and it was a difficult one to, to prove. I think that the study will help us, the study that they do will help us in that regard to suggest to persons who control the pocketbook that we need to consider larger venues for whatever we do, or we need to consider more. If we're going to do small schools, then we need to consider more small schools than, than trying to find a space for larger schools. But I think that that is something that, that we have considered, we do consider every time we do this. We also have to look at the spending power and the borrowing power of Suffolk, of the city of Suffolk. How much money they can afford to invest in a school each year or how much money they can afford to invest, period. We had our last discussion, so we're talking about being able to borrow like $30 million. Well, that's not enough to build the schools that we would like to build. That's not going to give us the money that, that we need. So we try to be reasonable in our proposals, but we also try to look forward. As you have suggested, that has always been a consideration that we've looked at, not waiting until we have 25 trailers behind a school before we decide to do it. But that's been something we've been dealing with all along.
Just to give you an example, Cherry, Cherry started life as a 1,200-student school.
Right, that's right.
It got dropped to 600. The board fought to get it back to 800, so yeah. We, we were lucky to get to 800.
No, I, I agree with you. I, I think we are not focusing on what I want you to get, so I'm going to reiterate it. Design the school for expansion later on down the road. When, when, when we, I understand Northern Shores is, when we build schools, it's easier if you already have the blueprint. This is the wing we're going to expand on when we go to city council. Hey, we understand our goal is a 1,200-capacity school. You can only fund us for a 800-capacity school. This is our plan in the event that we have to expand here to add an additional wing for 400. I don't think it would hurt to do that upfront than to come back later on and have to have an architectural study and all these other things done when you can pay it at one time in the design phase and have it designed that way where it's built in a small manner upfront and then it has room for growth later on down the road. That's my recommendation.
Mr. Napier.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you speak to our recent building, say for instance, a Pioneer Elementary School?
Yes.
That school was designed, blueprinted to expand, right?
Correct.
Okay, explain that.
It's possible. It would be possible at Hillpoint, Pioneer, even Florence Bowser. If we needed to add a wing, it would be possible to do that. Would it be desirable? I think not because it's going to change the footprint of that building, but it would be doable at that point. Actually, Northern Shores, Mac Ben, those would be easier schools to add on to than probably the newer buildings. But it's certainly a possibility at all of those elementary schools. If we were required to do so, we could probably add a wing that would accommodate upwards of 200, 300 students possibly. It doesn't take a lot, it takes 10 classrooms basically to accommodate 200 kids. So yes, I think it's possible. There, there certainly is an eye to that when architects design these buildings. We've had discussions with them in the past, but I would caution you, and we agree with what Mr. Riddick is saying, but when you go to do these renovations later on, you have to go through all the studies again. You have to go through all the funding requirements again. It saves you no money to go ahead and plan for that, even though an architect has told us we've got this section of the building where you can take a wing out of here if you ever need to. That's really all we need to know at that point because when the time comes to do that, you have to go through everything that you would go through to build a new school to get that wing added and it's certainly doable. Don't get, I'm not trying to sway you against additions. It's just very disruptive.
And, and those things have been considered through the years, those extending the blueprint and so forth.
Yes, and, and it's possible. And we have looked at the past. Mr. Riddick mentioned a three-story school. We looked at that for Fred Cherry, actually. We thought about going to get our 1,200 students at that time. But I think if you ask the principals in here, and there were a lot of us in here that used to be principals, a three-story building is very hard to manage from a principal's perspective. So you have to think about things like that too. What kind of grief is a staff going to experience with an elementary school or a middle school that's three stories high? At that point, you essentially have to have three offices because somebody's got to be on those floors to manage what goes on. So all of these things come into play when you talk to an architect about how we want to design a building. Now, the building that you settled on, the prototype that we've used for Hillpoint, a Bowser, Pioneer, that is a nice building. That works very well, especially Bowser. I would never recommend to you that you go away from that because like you, I don't see how you could have a nicer building than what we have. So you just have to be careful how big you want to go. It gets hard to manage at some point.
I recommend that we, in considering new schools, that we look to our neighbors as we often do. The city of Norfolk has a STEM academy on campus that I believe, if my memory is correct, for elementary students and it's a three-story elementary school. And it's not a lot of domes and odd shapes- And it's not a lot of domes and odd shapes. It's a simple rectangle, but it's emphasized in other areas to make the school still look moderate, where you still can get capacity and still it's easy to educate students. Thank you. I get what you're saying.
Any, any other questions?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to remind everyone that this will be brought back next month for a vote, so we'll take all the feedback into consideration and make any appropriate revisions. Thank you.
Any other comments before we move? I think we skipped over on the budget development calendar. I think we voted on Mr. Mitnick's motion for the extra meeting in November. Is that correct, Ms.?
Yes.
Chavis, and we need to go back on the budget development calendar. Anybody want to make a motion?
I move that we adopt the budget development calendar for fiscal year 2021.
Second.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brooks-Buck?
Yes.
Chairman Barham?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next item on the agenda, the 2021 school calendar, Dr. Harrison.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to bring to your attention, and this is going to be in your board books following the CIP, a memo from the state superintendent regarding pre-Labor Day legislation. This is being brought by a board member request to have some discussion around the possibility of consideration to opening schools prior to Labor Day. So I've provided the information here that includes the, the new state regulation, which allows school divisions to begin school up to 14 days before Labor Day. And if this is something that you would like for us to move forward with in our calendar planning for this school year, we would certainly just turn it over to the board to provide a directive on that, if that's something that you would like for staff to consider. Thank you.
Any discussion on that? Ms. Dor.
I think I would love, I would like to see some maybe surveys put out, that we get a lot of input, that we get input from parents, input from teachers. If we could do a quick monkey survey, put it out there. When does the committee usually begin to meet regarding the calendar?
So, it'll be the end of September.
Okay.
So. Got the first meeting. So the names will be brought to the board next month for the committee members for the new calendar.
Calendar. So maybe we could do that blast of a monkey survey to our various stakeholders and get their input. And then at our September meeting, the board could maybe have it by then to look at September 14th. I don't know what our meeting date is, 14th or something. So it might be even something for pre-service, that, that could be a survey monkey that every, you know, all the teachers are asked to fill out and see what the preference is. So I would like to recommend that. And then would that be still enough time for us to have a, then we would have time to ask as well around, and we could, would it be still time September to discuss this item? In terms of we want the calendar committee to move forward on that?
Anyone else?
The only thing that I would suggest is if you do that, I mean, survey monkey would be great for teachers to get feedback, but I do believe that parents in the community need to have major input in something like that.
Something like that, sure.
Especially in this area, and not just electronically. But in all ways, we need to make sure that everybody can be included in that, because everybody doesn't participate.
We probably have open houses.
Well, we could have open houses, but we'd need to have some paper, some something for people to be sure that they got a chance to get their input. Not just employees, but other people with regard to changing the whole school year.
I think I started with parents, right?
You did, but you were talking about doing survey monkey, and I was just saying to be more inclusive of everybody.
Sure. And if I may just add one point of clarification, we also meet annually with all the other school divisions in the Tidewater region to discuss syncing our calendars as much as we can to have some consistency, because we have staff who may live in other places and have children in other school divisions, and just out of consideration for that, and just trying to make sure that we are somewhat consistent. Our schedules, calendars aren't always exact, aren't the exact same, of course, but we do try to give some consideration to those things as well when we are planning the calendar.
And I can imagine our governor's school, our CCAP, CSET programs, all of our other programs that are done in concert with other school systems.
Have you heard what other systems are thinking on this now that the legislation is there?
I believe, you know, when this came out, that the initial conversation was with superintendents in the region to see if they were open to having their staffs reach out to get more input from the community on that first. So I'm not sure. I haven't heard back from, from everyone to see if their school divisions are actually.
So then we're sort of in line with what they're doing.
And we usually have those meetings in the fall with, with other school divisions.
Right, thank you.
I like to say whatever we do, community input is important.
Yep.
And for a major change like this, all stakeholders should be involved. And so as we look at it regionally with the superintendents, the other school divisions, our parents, our students, everybody, teachers, all of our stakeholders before we do something like this.
Madam Chair, I would like to recommend, based off the last survey that we did, that each board member visit the civic leads in your communities. Give them copies, paper copies, or use a Chromebook. You can check Wi-Fi out at the library. It's free. Use a Chromebook to get these surveys done. Put them in the churches. We cannot continue to do, to use traditional methods of reaching out far as having them available in the schools, because some schools didn't comply, and having it available online. Because there was, I believe, I think it was the issue with it, or something like that. But I think we really have to exhaust every possible option. I mean, we need everyone's input. Just jitter one off of what everyone has said thus far, but let's think outside the box. I'm giving some recommended approaches that we can take. The city of Suffolk, foyer office have a list of all civic organizations in the city. All we have to do is request, and we, and they'll give you the address that you can send them to.
We, I want to say this. I want everybody to be included, but I do want to say that of our seven districts, all of us have different challenges, different interests, different ability levels, different whatever. We did that with the survey, and out of 14,000, about 14,500 sets of parents, we got 752, 742 surveys back. So I think that, that we did before, I know when I first came on the board, we had community meetings, town halls, all sorts of things to discuss it, to be as inclusive as we possibly could. And with something as important as this, I think that, I agree with you that we need to look at all sorts of different things, but we each know the kinds of things that our communities respond to. So I think that that would be something to consider. But I agree with you that we need to open it as widely as we can and hope to get some results. But when we get results, if those results are less than one-half of 1% of the population, we cannot then go on and suggest that that's what everybody wants. So I think we need to be careful with, with whatever we do. We need to.
Anyone else? So, survey?
Yes.
Do we need a motion on that?
No.
Okay, so we're going to have a survey? Right, and get back on that on September?
Yes, we will certainly do that.
Do I request the uses of Chromebooks now? Because that was a hindrance when I did the survey. I didn't get the Chromebooks in time to really get out and maximize the usage that I would have gotten had I got them in time. When I got them, it was my work day, so I mean, 12 hours, I couldn't do much. So do I need to put in my request now so the board can vote on it again? That's why I'm asking, so it doesn't have to slow me down in what I'm, in getting my constituents to say.
Well, I would assume we approved it once. I would think that you could go and.
I think you just have to leave Dr. Harrison.
Yeah, we can.
So I don't have to go through the voting process again?
We had to vote on it because we had never done that before.
Right, so we gave you approval.
So it's on record. I'm good, okay.
You can get Chromebook, right?
That's not a problem.
Thank you.
Like we did before. Okay, so we'll come back to that in September. Next item, Ordinance 19/20-4, Amending Section, Chapter 8, Article 32, Section 8-31, 32-1, entitled, "Class Rank Determined: Effect of Repeat Course Class Rank of the Policies of Suffolk City School Board." This is a first reading and adoption.
Madam Chair, the policy committee met and talked about this, and since this actually means for the public understanding, we just recommended the removal of the D-minus grade from the existing policy. That's the only thing that has changed. So with that in mind, Madam Chair, I move to approve and adopt this policy.
I second.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick? Riddick?
I know. I had a question, and I was trying to get clarity on it, because we didn't have discussion. We jumped into it a vote real quickly. Is there a particular reason as to why we want to remove the D-minus from it? Because in college, if those who are going on further, it's there. So is there a particular reason?
If I may, so I would like to just call your attention to, provided sort of the memo that sort of describes the rationale for the request. And so I requested a review of our grading scale policy, because there, I noticed there was a discrepancy with the D-minus grade, and did some research on D-min, on the D-grade with other school divisions in our region, and found that we were the only school division out of all the ones that I researched, and I listed them in the memo, Hampton, Portsmouth, Norfolk, Isle of Wight, Virginia Beach, Chesapeake, et cetera, that offered a grade of D-minus. And so I made the recommendation that we consider eliminating the D-minus on the scale and just making it clear that anything below a D in our school division would be considered unsatisfactory.
Thank you. I vote yes.
Vice Chair Brooks, oh, excuse me, School Board Member Story?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brooks-Buck?
Yes.
Chairman Barham?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next item. Ordinance 19/20-7, Amending Section, Chapter 10, Article 17, Section 10-17.1, entitled, "Complaints About a Particular School, Complaints About the Curriculum or Instructional Materials of the Policies of the Suffolk City School Board." This is a first reading and adoption.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept this ordinance, that we approve this ordinance, and the action is needed now, because school is beginning, and we need to have this in place for that purpose.
So second?
Second.
Serval spoke. Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brooks-Buck?
Yes.
Chairman Barham?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next item, Ordinance 19/20-5, Adding a New Section, Chapter 2, Article 2, Section 2-2.72, entitled, "Appointment to Standing Committees and Foundation Boards, Appointment to Citizen Advisory Committees, Reports by Committees, Number of Committee Members of the Policies of the Suffolk City School Board." This is a first reading, and no action is required at this time. Any discussion? If not, Ordinance 19/20-6, Adding a New Section, Chapter 2, Article 2, Section 2-2.73, entitled, "Committee Authority, Committee Chair, Roles and Responsibilities of Committee Chair, Notice of Meetings, Public Access to Committee Meetings, Rules of Order of the Policies of the Suffolk City School Board." And this is a first reading. No action is required. And I believe we moved some items on the consent agenda that we need to go back to. I believe they were items four, five, six, and seven. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, going back to those. Is there further discussion?
Well, I would like to make a motion based on the information you gave, that we approved the field trip, the football scrimmage game from Nazman River High School to Sterling using athletic funds for that field trip. So I make a motion to do that.
Second. Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Brooks-Buck?
Yes.
Chairman Barham?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Yes, there is also, I'd like to move to approve the number four, because it takes place October 19th, 2019, for the Kings Fork High School band competition.
I second.
In that one, it has just allocation funds, and if it could say the band funds.
Well, I'm sure that, that references for the band, is that.
Pretty sure about that, and I can, we can provide additional clarification next month, but I'm, I'm quite sure that's what it would be.
It would be the band, band funds.
Generally, band and chorus, they have their own allocations.
That's right.
Their own funds.
And if you, if you go back to the actual document itself, it says Kings Fork High School Band may be invited to participate in the band competition October 19th. So that's no guarantee, and we don't want to, well, I, I don't want to hinder them should they get invited. This band has afforded so many scholarships to our students.
Sure, I just, I just wanted that on the application. And if I could ask you, on the dropdown, is there anything for the fine arts that they could choose instead of allocation? Okay, great. All right, I'm, I'm fine just with that clarification, and if we could get that, then there wouldn't, there wouldn't be any.
We'll bring that back.
Any doubt, that would be great.
Sure, no problem.
Here's a motion.
Yep, motion on.
Board Member Jenkins?
No, wait, this is just, you just said number four, right?
I said number four, because I guess we're looking at them individually, but I would assume that they all band and orchestra auditions, that James Madison would give students an opportunity to. I don't, I don't see any need in holding these up.
I don't, I don't, I don't either, as long as it's clarified. Could I make an amendment to your motion that we approve four, five, and six? Based on that, it would, they would use fine art funds. Could I have a second to that amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
You want a second?
I second.
Okay.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Brooks-Buck?
Yes.
Chairman Barham?
Yes.
Motion carried.
That completes the new business. Public speakers on non-agenda topics, none?
No, we have no one signed up.
Okay, moving on to business by board members. Ms. Jenkins?
Yes, I don't have much to say, but I'm excited for us to be here for the new school year, especially the new school board members, the staff. I'm just confident that you're going to do the exceptional job that you have already been doing. I have asked a question when I was in school, not too many years ago, but the policies and procedures, you know, that I brought up, that we give to, we used to give them to parents and the teachers, I mean, and the students would know, you know, like dress code and different things like that. And I was wondering, like an orientation, is it just a, you know, give it to you and you have it, or is it actually explained to them so the parents and the students will not have the opportunity to say they didn't know, you know, like just the weapons and all that type of thing, so it's out in the open? So I just, I wanted clarification on that, and if not, is it. So I just, I wanted clarification on that, and if not, is it some way we can do that in an open section? I know school is getting started now, but that's what I.
It's certainly addressed at the orientation zone. We shared the, I'm not sure if you received what I sent you via email, the information that will go home to parents for them to sign off, acknowledging that they've received and understand the, the policies and procedures, but not sure if any, if there's anything additional from, from staff on that, but I'd be happy to come back and, you know, report out additional information.
Right, so.
But certainly, we'll, we'll make sure we remind principals and kind of reiterate that fact.
Yeah, so basically, we just give it to them, and they sign it, whether they read it or not, they'll say, they'll send it back, but there's no verbal, you know, place where we have orientation, and the parents are there, and the students are there, and we say it to them.
It may vary some, honestly, from, from school to school, in terms of their specific approach with how that's presented, but that's definitely something we can reiterate to administrators to ensure that everyone is having some kind of presentation about it, if you will.
Karen, I agree with that concern. I think I like that idea that there is a time and a place that it has been said verbally and has been gone through. I think that's a really good idea.
But overall, I mean, as far as my comments, like I said, I'm excited. I just know this is gonna be a great school year, and me myself personally, as a school board member, if anyone needs anything, just contact me. Happy school day.
I will add something to what you said. I know that previously, and Dr. Harrison may speak to this, a lot of the schools do SOL review type thing, the principals have a night where they do all types of things. That might be a consideration in maybe doing that, you know, particular policy, you know, during that time, because I've been to a lot of those, and I was thinking, you know, sitting in the audience, this would have been a grand time to introduce some of those things to the parents that were captive at that moment.
Right, right.
So that is an idea I have on that.
And having, doing that prior to school opening would be, you know, be great.
Yeah, absolutely.
Like orientation or something?
Yeah.
Orientation.
Well, they have orientations. I was, just in terms of the format, it may vary a little from, from school to school, but I will certainly reiterate the fact that that's a component that we need to make sure is very explicitly included in that.
Right, right. Thank you.
Mr. Mittick?
First question, Madam Chair, do we have to approve dates for closed sessions?
Dates for what?
Closed sessions coming up?
No, that's covered by the fifteen day window.
Mr. Wall, do we need to approve dates for closed sessions?
For the interviews?
Do we have to approve dates for?
That, that was approved under the fifteen day window. You don't do specific dates, you only have the window.
Right. Oh, I know what you're referring to, no, yeah.
Okay.
We don't have to do that, no.
You know, Karen, Board Member Jenkins said how great it, she was looking forward to, to the new school year. I'm still left in last year in summer school. I would like, just like to extend the board's appreciation to all the teachers and administrators and teacher assistants that gave their time in summer school. You know, we, several of us attended the LEAP programs closing, and it was very evident the hard work that went into that. I had an opportunity to visit each Wednesday and volunteer. I'd like to give a shout out to the third grade team at LEAP. They did an excellent job in, in meeting the goals for, for what they were there to do, and made sure that the kids had an opportunity to do it in a relaxed, more relaxed environment. So I'd like to thank from, from kindergarten all the way through our summer school program for high school students and our graduates, thank everyone who gave their time.
Thank you, Mr. Mittick. Ms. Mayo?
Also, I would like to thank all of the summer school participants and those who had a hand in making it a success. I enjoyed the LEAP closing program as well, along with the other board members, and I am certainly looking forward to the next school year, and I'd like to thank Dr. Harrison and the school administrative staff and all who are having a hand in helping to make our upcoming year a success, especially during this time of transition. Thank you.
Mr. Riddick?
Okay. I would like to say first and foremost, on Tuesday, I went throughout the Suffolk Barrow, going to various different national night outs, speaking with a lot of constituents and youth, and it gave me great joy that most of, no, all of the feedback that I was getting was positive, and people see the work that has been done, and they see the improvements, and they're just looking forward to, as I am, looking forward to another excellent school year, as we continue to make progressions forward. However, I do have a couple of questions. What are the updates from the state on restraints and seclusion for special ed students, and how are we addressing these state mandates?
I'd be happy to call to, and this may be an item that would require, you know, staff to come back.
So let me rephrase then.
Report out on, or?
I can rephrase it then. Could we have reports at the next meeting?
Absolutely.
To address the following? I apologize, I don't want to put you on the spot. So the first question is, what are the updates from the state on restraints and seclusion for special ed students, and how are we addressing the state mandates? The next item is, what are the updates on region programs from the state, and how is Suffolk Public Schools and CSEP addressing the changes? And the next question, the last question would be, what support will we put into place for these returning CSEP students? And if that can just come back at the next meeting, that'd be fine.
May I, may I give you something? I, I chair that board as a board member, CSEP board, I can give you some information on the restraints policy, CSEP, and as, as well as several other kinds of similar programs, they were monitored by the state to see if there were any practices in place that were inappropriate or not aligned with, with the new policies, and so far, we have, we've been fine. We've been approved, we've been appropriate with regard to restraints and seclusion. We are still, we've gotten a final report from them so far with approval, but as they continue to monitor records and to look at things, that's always something that's open, but we are being consistent with that. That's a new thing that people are considering, and I think that some of the legislators, I remember when the discussions first began, were unfamiliar with the difficulty with some students who have some very serious disabilities, and so the involvement, people were concerned about, and people who did not know, did not really understand that. I remember maybe year before last, we went to a presentation, looking at legislation and looking at approvals, and some of the V S B A attorneys presented to us some information and some clarification they had to make to our legislators with regard to restraints and seclusion, and when they are actually needed. So I know that with regard to CSEP, we've been approved so far, we have not been found to have any kinds of problems with that, if that's what you mean, and of course, we can get the full report from them, because that is available. And your second question was about, was it about CSEP?
What supports will be in place for these returning students?
To schools. Now, I can't answer.
So.
I can answer this, and I know that CSEP is always available, CSEP employees are always available, at least they've helped us in some situations where we did not request it formally with some of the students who were having challenges, who were included in inclusion type programs. Now, I know we have a new special ed director who would not know the history, but will know from now on what, what goes on.
So, Madam Chair, that way we wouldn't put anyone on the spot, could we get a formal presentation from our staff to answer those questions at our next meeting?
Yes, we can do that.
Thank you.
Ms. Story?
Yes, thank you. I want to say congratulations to the summer grads, even though I wasn't able to make that night. Congratulations, summer graduates, I think that's just great. And I heard that it was a, I don't think Mr. Brandt is here, but I heard that it was an awesome, inspiring graduation speech, so kudos to that. That's just great. The teacher crisis management book that we were given and sent out, one of the things it talked about is a teacher handbook, and I've brought this up before, I think I asked Mr. Mittnick. I don't know that we have a specific teacher handbook that's, doesn't have all of the student things in it, and just a handbook for teachers, and especially for new teachers coming into the district. If you could check into that, I think a teacher handbook for teachers, and again, maybe this, I think a hard copy is important, but I, and I don't even think there's one that's titled that online specifically, and in that teacher handbook, I'd also like to see some things about co-teaching, what that looks like, especially for sped, so, you know, just what are our expectations for co-teaching and how that looks? So this, I'm not, not putting this on for that September per se opening day, but I don't, I do think we don't have that kind of manual, kind of concise for teachers. I could be wrong, but would you please look into that? And, and I'm pretty sure the whole co-teaching component, I think that should be in writing with expectations to help, just to help solidify what our district is expecting with that kind, because we do put brand new teachers in that situation, and I would think it's addressed in the pre-service, but it's always good to have it for them to refer back to. Is that a reasonable?
Absolutely, and are you thinking, so in terms of the co-teaching, sort of a separate?
You could do it however you think would be best, and that might just go to teachers who are involved in the co-teaching on a yearly basis, or it could be.
Presentation, so like with the crisis management, and then a separate sort of presentation on co-teaching, is that what?
Yeah, I, I just noticed that it was in the crisis management book, it talked about a teacher's manual, and I'm, just don't think that we have one, actually. So I don't need any, I mean, I don't need a presentation of the crisis management, it just reminded me that we don't, I don't think we have a teacher's manual, per se, and then I would like to see something done with co-teaching. The other thing in the, there is one more thing I noticed in the crisis management book, it talks about code red, but it doesn't have, it doesn't delineate what the teachers, what the teacher, school, et cetera, is supposed to do during code red, and I know that there's specific things laid out in the state safety guide of what things, what things are required or recommended for code red in terms of what they should do. Now, maybe that's somewhere else, but I think safety is, you can't, we can't over or underestimate safety, so I don't know where that might be, but I know it's not in the crisis manage, that crisis management book we have, it just says code red, and it's in a different type, and so I don't know what, but do you know?
Sure, I think what you all had was the overall division template review.
Okay.
What we are receiving currently right now is school, individuals, so code red looks different by building, and they have to delineate and explain exactly what it looks like by location, by classroom, et cetera.
Good, so.
Very, very specific and detailed, and there's still, the first step was to get it approved by you all as that state template in the August meeting, and right now, these schools are working on theirs.
On theirs, so then we'll see that.
It's not a public document, though, in terms of.
You know, and that's sort of funny, though, because it says in there that it's handed out to all staff, and if that's the case, I mean, it does say that, then that would make it public, just saying. And there, most of it isn't, there isn't anything in there that's real, I don't think there's any, but anyway.
There are certain aspects of safety procedures that will be.
Yeah, okay, so I'm, I'm just putting it out there, I'm, I am interested in safety coming up, we can't be too careful.
If you advertise all of that, I mean, just logically, I'm not thinking practically, but if you advertise all of that, then the person who was attacking the school would know as well, so it would seem that that would be a reason for it not to be a detailed public plan out in the open, because you tell the person who's attacking the school where to go. I, I don't know.
Crisis management plans are specifically exempt under four.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, wait a minute.
Anything else?
Yeah. I'm excited for the new school year as well. I think we're gonna have a great start, and I'm very excited, I thought we had a, I think we're really doing well in our steps towards a new superintendent, and I think we, V S B A has really helped us lay out the plan, and we're walking the steps, and I'm very encouraged by that, and I think our, our public can be encouraged as well. So I think we have a slate of good candidates we're interviewing, and I'm excited for that process. Thank you.
Dr. Buck?
Well, I think that I can agree with everybody about the LEAP Academy, I attended the program, I thought it was great. I think that our staff has done a tremendous job this year, we've had a lot of movement, a lot of changes, a lot of all sorts of things, but we've been able to weather the storm, and you guys have done a great job, and I want to say that to you face to face. Oftentimes, people are full of criticism about whichever part they don't like, but it takes, it really is a team effort to do what you have done, and I think we've had a banner year, so congratulations to all of you, and thank you for what you're doing. We appreciate it.
That it?
That's it.
Ditto, 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 you know, you go my remarks, but anyway, I did want to emphasize a couple of things. Recently, we did have a very productive meeting with the city. I want to thank the mayor, the city manager, Mr. Roberts, Mayor Johnson, the city council, that was a very productive meeting. We have been able to develop a wonderful rapport with the city. Mayor Johnson is open to many of our ideas, the city council as well, and our city manager, and I think that speaks well, and I'm going to say this, for the work of our former, well, almost former, our.
Superintendent.
Vacationing Superintendent, Dr. Whitney, he developed a good rapport, and we have worked on that now for many years, chairs and vice chairs and everyone included, and now, of course, Dr. Harrison. And I just want to thank them for all that they did, we're working towards some really great ideas for our city and for the future of Suffolk Public Education. I want to piggyback on the summer school graduation, I think Mr. Mittnick and I attended that, it was excellent. I have been to every summer school graduation since I've been on this board, and I have never seen the crowd that was there, the supporters. Dr. Harrison gave a wonderful speech, Mr. Bryant gave a wonderful speech, a very inspiring speech, as many of you said, but I just saw so much community support, and the families and friends and all the people who came, the auditorium was full, you know. I've been to graduations before for summer school where there were very few people by, you know, in support of those young people, and I think it speaks well for our staff and for us that they came out like that, and I appreciate the parents and the students for that. And I guess I will end it at that, I could, okay, Dr. Buck wants to say?
I just want to say one more thing that I forgot, and I shouldn't have forgotten, Code Virginia, I had the opportunity to go to Code, the Code Virginia presentation at Colonel Fred Cherry Middle School, the team did a wonderful job, it's a state grant, we're a part of that, and we had several teachers there from all over the area, several teachers from our school system, and of course, our staff was there in support of everything that was done. Everybody commented on how well it was done, what was done, and the fact that the governor's wife was there with us, and she was in a session, involved in a session, so it just went very well, and Suffolk Public Schools, as always, it was superior, we did what we needed to do, it was an excellent time for us to share with people, she thought our schools were, our school was beautiful, and I share that with her, but, but it was a great time for us, and so just thank you to those staff members who were responsible for that. Mrs. Story came by as well for that, but we just.
Mrs. Story came by as well for that, but we just, we just did a great job. It was tight, well done. Thank you.
And I think we need to look at informational items. Any questions on that? And if no other items, meeting is adjourned. Wait. Oh. Check my chair. People want to know what we're doing. Thank you, Karen. Let me see, you got, you got real busy with all the other ladies.
I didn't just...
She said she...
I didn't.
No, because he went on, went to all the personnel...
Before, Mr. Middnick, before you leave, we have one thing we did not do.
Wait, wait, we got one thing. Excuse us, we, we omitted one of our items on closed session. We omitted one item.
On closed session?
Yeah, from closed session. We had a lot.
We did. We moved to approve, Madam Chair, I'd like to move to approve that we approved the...
A motion to the opening.
Oh, moved to approve the reopening of our meeting.
I second.
Yes, second.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Middnick?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Chairman Barham?
Yes.
Motion carried to reopen the meeting?
Now, I move to approve that we approve the personnel report, the pupil personnel report as presented.
I second.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Middnick?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Chairman Barham?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.